The Committee of the Whole is back from recess. It's 2 o'clock right now, colleagues. We don't have quorum yet, so we will be in a moment's recess until we can acquire quorum.
Call to order.
Yeah. We were called to order, but because there's no quorum, we will be in a moment's recess till we can acquire quorum. It's come to order right now. I will talk about the rules of engagement, and then I will ask the panel to get sworn in, and then we'll go ahead and proceed from there. The materials for the Committee of the Whole, colleagues, are in the shared session. Google Drive folder labeled Committee of the Whole Substitute Bill Number 154-37LS. Proposed amendments must be submitted in writing to the clerk via sessiondrive@guamilegislature.org. Amendments not in writing will be called out of order. The rules of engagement, colleagues, we will have three rounds for discussions. We will have two rounds of questions for the panel. With each senator allotted five minutes for questions, not including responses. Time to speak may not be yielded from more than one member to another. A member who yields that member's time on a question yields all that member's time on that question and may not later speak, even if all the time yielded was not used via Section 1.02d3. And after the completion of the two rounds of questions, was not used via Section 1.02d3. And after the completion of the two rounds of questions, the panelists will be asked to be excused. And then, colleagues, the third round is for amendments or comments. The third round is for amendments or comments to speak on the bill. So after we complete the discussion of the bill, I will allow the sponsor to close, and I will entertain a motion for the recommendation of the Committee of the Whole, followed by a motion to rise from the Committee of the Whole, at which time I will report out the bill as recommended by the Committee of the Whole. Okay? Sign of Maasi. And at this time, I would ask the Sergeant of Arms, at this time, will you please swear in the panel members?
Not Leo, well.
Please stand and raise your right hand.
Will she speak? Yeah, yeah, she can swear.
Under penalty of perjury, you all affirm that any and all information you provide today, whether it be verbally, electronically, and in writing, be the whole truth and nothing but the truth. Madam Chair, do not hold your seat. You may proceed. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And at this time, as we usually do, I'll start from the back. I'll start with my left, your right, and the first one to speak. Oh, okay. I will have the panel members introduce themselves, but before I do that, with me here is Mr. Alan Sapeda, who is the Committee Director for this committee this afternoon. And Mr. Byrne, please.
Good afternoon, Senators. Edward Byrne, Director of Administration and Chairman of the Health Insurance Negotiating Team.
Good afternoon. My name is Leonora Candazo, Department of Administration Employee Benefits Branch Supervisor.
My name is Joseph Artero Cameron. I come to this august body representing all persons with disabilities under the Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disabilities by public law. I am the representative to them, to the frail, the elderly, and even those individuals that I have served when I retired from Gov Guam in 2016, having returned. And just for the record, I have been in the field of negotiation for many years from prior governors, have worked for four other governors, and I have background in health. So when I speak to you, I speak with you with some candid statements that I am a subject or expert in many ways in healthcare. I spent my life in it. Prior to going to college, I spent many years in the old hospital as a volunteer for 4,000 hours before I even went to college. So my passion was always there. And to my left was my Deputy Director for the Department of Integrated Services for Individuals with Disabilities, the Honorable Vice Speaker Tina Barnes. She's probably one of the bestest operations managers for disability programs that I know of since having stepped away from that position. I'm very happy to be here. I basically would like to just bring in some some level of common language versus going into what the actuarials do. I just want to like see what appeals to our population and how it affects and impresses good practices. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. At this time, I will go ahead and start at the back. I'll start with Senator Tom Fisher. You have the floor for five minutes.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. I yield my time to Minority Leader Senator Frank Bloss.
Thank you very much. Senator Roy Canata, do you have any questions for the first round? Thank you. Senator Joe Sin Augustin.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Simple, I'd like to ask the DOA, can you tell us about the self-insurance program? Tell us all about it and where we at at this point. And whatever you can review, and if you can review some information, just say that. At what point you cannot review any further. Please, Mr. Byrne?
Thank you, Senator. This proposal, which has now turned into an agreement with a third-party administrator for administration of a self-insured policy, I should say plan rather than policy, for the government of Guam, has matured over many months, and indeed over many years. Included in Section 4301 for GCA is the permission for us to have a self-insured policy. And my understanding is that that provision has been in the code for many years, if it proves to be economically advantageous. At the beginning of this financial year, the negotiating team for Fiscal 24 was constituted. It consists of 10 voting members, or it's supposed to be 11, but we only had 10 voting members, plus a few non-voting members, who delved into this proposal and this plan over very many months. I wasn't aware until that conversation started that actually a proposal for and a recommendation for a self-insured plan actually was proposed to DOA several years ago, in fact, in 2007. And it was recommended at that time that that be seriously considered. Obviously, sometime before I got to DOA. For the last few years, the cost of medical insurance has increased, on an average, I would say somewhere between 10, 12, 15% a year. Medical costs increase. That's not really within our control. As medical procedures improve, naturally, the equipment, the supplies, and the process becomes more expensive, as well as the fact that many of these supplies and processes rely upon goods and services as provided. And as we all know, a great deal of these supplies are petroleum-based. They're going to increase as the cost of oil increases. And the providers, the doctors, and the technicians, and the nurses who provide these services also deserve, obviously, a living wage, and their costs increase. We've seen that here over the last few years, and particularly since COVID, over the last couple of years. So the team looked at a number of different proposals, and we didn't march on this path by ourselves. We had our actuaries walking alongside us, giving us advice, and presenting us with their experience. And Milliman, who are incidentally, as I think I mentioned before, the actuaries for the Pension Fund, they have a large division that deals with health insurance and health insurance for government-type entities. So they're very familiar with this process. The government of Guam's population that's subject to insurance is a large group. That's significant because you would expect the risk for a larger group to be a normal risk. Unfortunately, that's not necessarily so. We actually have a large number of, in particular, retirees, and Mr. Cameron will speak about this, I'm sure, later, a large number of retirees, and even some active employees who have particularly acute conditions. And they need special care. And that obviously adds to the cost of our own insurance. So after studying this for a while and effectively evaluating the most beneficial way of looking at how we should frame a plan, we decided that it would be advantageous to put forward a self-funded plan for consideration by the team. And as I say, the team considered it and voted on it. The team also consisted of a, on the team was a member from this body who was a voting member, and concluded that a self-insured plan was to be recommended to the governor, which is what was done. One of the things that comes, I guess it's an advantage of a self-insured plan, is it takes the risk out from the providers. If we had an insured plan, and we split it between, as we did previously, between two or even three carriers, each of them is concerned that they will get the sicker or sickest population. So they price that in, even though for the government as a whole, the risk is the same. To them, there's an acute risk. To us, there's a serious risk. So by having a self-insured policy, we're taking that risk pricing out of the cost of the insurance. And that's one of the biggest advantages of a self-insured plan.
Mr. Byrne, since you mentioned it's a committee, can you reveal who's on the committee? I know you identified one is in the legislature. Can you identify who they are? I mean, I'm just curious to know what expertise you had there. And was the Attorney General's Office involved in it? Because I know you got some legal issues you got to make sure's airing out.
By statute, certain people have to be on the committee. There has to be, and I will ask Leo, because I probably will forget somebody, because all our meetings were held by Zoom because of conditions. But there's a member from DICID with Mr. Cameron, by statute. There's a member from the legislature, by statute. There's a member from the judiciary, by statute, so long as the judiciary has not yet chosen to opt out. And during the course of the negotiations, they were there, and subsequently, right at the end, chose to opt out. There's a member from BBMR, and there's a member from the Department of Education, because they have a big population. And there's a member from the retirement plan, and there's a member who represents retirees. Non-voting members are a member for the Health Committee and from OFB, your very own staff.
I'm counting it, and I don't think we reached 10 yet. Did we reach 10? Just counting.
Well, there's me. There's me.
Oh, okay. Okay, the next question, because you mentioned that through the years, the price goes up. And then you said, and if I'm correct, you said that we go self-insured, the price goes down, the premium. Am I correct?
Well, it doesn't necessarily go down, but it arrests the unarrested increase.
Okay. Since you mentioned risks, do you know the percentage? I'll give you a good example. 10,000 employees, what is the number of employees that go see the doctors? Because somebody's putting money in their pocket. That's all I know. It's a business. If you got 10,000 employees, how many employees go to the doctors? That, remember, this program is yearly. It's not a month-to-month. It's you join, and you're good for one year. You get deducted, the government adds their shares. What has the cost been to the government and to the employee? And how many people do you have a number of, the number of people that went to the doctors that are from whatever insurance company? I'm just curious, because when you state that there's a risk, there's a risk in everything. When you drive out the road, there's a risk. Even being here is a risk. But I'm just concerned is that when you have a risk, I need to know the numbers of people that went to the doctors, how much money was given and taken? Because it's a business transaction. But at the same token, I'm curious, when you say there's a risk, what protects the government from the expenditures shooting up to the sky where the government can't even cover it? And how can the government protect themselves from the risk running away from us?
Well, Senator, as you say, there's a risk in everything. There's a risk in this, right? But there's also a risk that even if it were self-insured, in the subsequent year, the carrier that did insure you in year one would have not only to bear the increased risk in year two, but also possibly, and I've heard a carrier say this, also possibly recover the losses of year one. So you're never going to avoid paying, no matter what process you have, no matter what plan you have, you're never going to avoid paying for the cost of medical care. I don't have the numbers that you're asking for, who goes to the doctor. Obviously, that increases with advancing years. I can attest to that myself. But I can assure you that from what I could, just generally from what I see, the plan is well-used by our employees. And it actually forms a very important part of the health coverage for the island, because this group of people are not relying upon other sources for their medical care, such as Medicaid or MIP. It's being funded by the government, and it's being actuarially funded by the government.
Okay. And then, as you mentioned also, is that part of the, I guess, they have to bid it out to be the administrator. Somebody, there's a winner and there's a loser. That's just the normal process. I think we did this on the budget. We identified, think Select Care was going to be the administrator. Who were the losers that also competed? I'm just curious. Can you reveal that information?
No, sir, we can't reveal that information. But Select Care were the winners of the bidding process.
Okay. So this, and where we at now, and the reason why I'm asking is where we at now? Because October's coming around. There's got to be an open enrollment and all that process. Are we on track? Is Gov Guam on track? And what is the, remember I asked earlier, when you mentioned there's a risk, what is the risk protection for the government so we don't, so the government doesn't go broke? You know what I mean, when everybody wants to come? Because I'm almost sure, you have 1,000 employees, you don't have 1,000 people going to the doctor every year, every day. The percentage is lots more.
No. And as I said a few minutes ago, we have a normalized risk. We have employees who are young, and we have employees who are advancing in years, and we have retirees. So if you put all that together, we should have a normalized risk, because we're a significant sample of the island's population. And to answer your question is, we have put out a memorandum today announcing details of the open enrollment and announcing details of the employees' contribution.
Okay. I still need to know, is there any, I don't know, insurance on insurance to protect the risk for the government, that it doesn't run away? You know, I mean, I don't know, what is your, what's your max? You know, I mean, I don't know, what, what is your, what's your max to contribution and the government's contribution? The employer's contribution? What is the max and that you could estimate you could get? And what protects the government from it taking off? Where the government goes broke?
Okay, part of the, part of the process is to secure stop-loss insurance. We're in the process of doing that. That's not complete yet. It will be in place by the time the policy starts. That's usually the nature of reinsurance, that you can't get reinsurance until you've firmed up the primary insurance. So once that was done, we started the process. And I was kind of really surprised that when we started the process and we looked at the number of reinsurers that are qualified, that's not to say they would necessarily bid, but are qualified to reinsure Graham. It was something like 59, 59 insurers. So we have a large number of people to choose from. There's two varieties of stop-loss insurance. You can either insure against the aggregate, which means that when the total of your claims reaches so much, then the reinsurer steps in and takes that risk. Or you can reinsure against a high, an individually high claim. And that's our process at the moment is, we're looking at, is to secure insurance against individually high claims. Which makes sense because of what I just said about the, the, the distribution of our regular claims being normal.
Okay, through your experience, Mr. Byrne, because you were at G M H, whenever somebody makes a claim to their insurance to get paid by the insurance company, are, are we expecting self-insured will speed up the claim and payment? So that everybody, you know, the providers, like G M H or any doctor out there will get paid faster than through the insurance? Because I remember hearing at one point that some insurance people come up with reasons why they won't pay. All the reasons to delay. When they knew they had a bill to pay and there were the, the providers, the insurers.
Medical billing is very interesting. And yes, it took up a lot of my time at, at G M H. The, the general rule is that insurers are required to pay their bills timely, which in most cases, and in, in our case, and by contract, I think, with the, at least at the time that I was at G M H, within 45 days. But in order to operate that, it has to be what's called a clean claim. And that means a claim that has no disputable items in it and is, and the medical record supporting it supports all the charges that are included in, in that claim. It can happen sometimes that what, you know, what, what happened, I, I remember when, when I was there, that a medication was given on a Wednesday, but wasn't, didn't appear in the billing until a Thursday. And some insurers just took that as a reason for not, for not calling the claim a clean claim. So we rely upon, you know, the reasonableness of insurers. G M H certainly would rely upon having close contact. And we used to have monthly meetings with the insurance carriers to avoid that kind of problem. And, um, that was the process that we adopted when, when I was there. And I don't suppose there's any different practice now, because that seems to be a sensible way of, of operating. The, you know, the, the goal of course, anybody providing a service is to get paid for that service as soon as possible. And especially in the case of a hospital, which in some cases, in the case of inpatients, is a continuing service. So not only do you have to pay for what has been incurred, but you've, you've got to make sure that the insurer, because they have quality control and you, you know, usage review will approve of the, of the treatment plan that you're, that you're using. So it's a lot, a lot of, a lot of effort goes into making sure that those claims are paid on time.
So you're saying, Mr. Byrne, at one point or another, if, if the claim is placed and it's, it's good today, but they have to add something tomorrow? They make that excuse not to pay because, because of yesterday's? That's unacceptable. How is the government gonna be better than them? I'm just curious, the self-insurance, how is it gonna be better? Whatever you submit, you know, it's kind of like you snooze, you lose. Submit your claim, be done, goodbye. Come back and resubmit our new claim so we can move on.
I'm not suggesting that this, you know, was either a, a, a good process or indeed that any particular insurer adopted that process. It's just part and parcel of medical billing, whether it's on Guam or in California or in, in Australia, that that same process would, would, would obtain. You have to make sure that your billings are clean. And there's no excuse for a, for a, a carrier to do otherwise. Sometimes carriers will want to negotiate an all-up rate, right? And there's, there's also some pressure, mainly because that's the process adopted with Medicare for having a per diem rate rather than have a, a rate that includes a whole lot of items, right? That, that's certainly something that should be looked at. And, and in some cases, if there's a particular surgery, for instance, the insurance company will just want to negotiate an all-up rate and say, okay, we think we should be paying you 25,000 or 36,000 or whatever for this procedure where the patient had surgery and was in, was an inpatient for six days. We're going to pay you 36,000. You either agree that or you don't agree that. Obviously, if you agree, you get paid. If you don't agree, you have to keep on negotiating. That's the nature of the, of the beast. In our case, we're not going to pay people directly. Part of the T P A's duties, as set forth in the R F P, was for the, for the T P A to pay the claims. However, since we are responsible for actually funding those claims, if providers aren't paid on time, I am sure I will hear about it. Leo will hear about it and we will operate on that. We don't hear about that now, but I'm sure we will in the future.
All right, thank you. I'm, I'll wait for, there is another round, right? And, and I just hope that this bill is not about because somebody lost on the bid to be the administrator. That's what I'm really hoping. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Sinagastin. Senator Perez, you have five. You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you to the panel for being here. So Director Byrne, can you explain how, first of all, how were the premiums determined? Was it the actuary that determined that amount?
Yes, Senator.
And can you basically go into detail how that was arrived at?
Please bear in mind, I'm not an actuary, but I'm looking at the numbers and I think I understand how the numbers are brought about. So the, the actuaries built up rates. Because with a self-insured plan, the carrier would, would, would arrive at a rate, but they'd use the same process. They have to build up a rate too. They may not use the same numbers or the same rationale, but overall, they would use the same process. So they started with an estimate of the claims based upon, generally based upon history. And I think, you know, during the public hearing, I mentioned that during, during COVID, usage was very low. When COVID began to abate, usage climbed as, as people began to opt to have elective surgery again and surgery, and medical procedures that got deferred during the time that, that COVID was, was pandemic. So they looked at a period and they determined what they thought was a normal amount of claims. They took account of any discounts that might apply. And that would be a deduction. They added the claims that are, and that's, this is normal with insurance claims. They added the claims that are incurred but not paid. So we know, for instance, on September the 30th, there will be claims that are incurred because we have people visiting providers. We have people in hospital, but they're not yet paid on 30th of September. So an amount is added to take account of those claims that are in progress. They increased it to take account of cost trends. And they also increased it because of the small amount of benefit adjustments that we made. And I think I spoke about those at the public hearing, that we improved, in, in particular, on the dental side, we improved the benefit. We increased the cap from $1,000 to $1,500. And then we added the, the administrative costs that were quoted to us by the third party. We took a, we asked, well, we, we didn't. The, the actuaries estimated additional pharmacy administrative costs that, that they also quoted. And then we added some margins to take account of unknowns, like any actuary would do. And, and adding all this up, they arrived at recommended rates that were used for us in this plan.
Okay, so is this the same actuary that we've been using? Or has it been different actuaries back? I guess you mentioned, when was the first time that self-insurance was talked about?
This was before my time, which is why I'm having to get, get Leo, who actually has been dealing with this for how many years?
1995.
For very many years. But it was in 2007 that this conversation started.
Okay, yeah, the reason I ask is, you know, how close were they to the cost? Were they pretty on point in the, the past as far as the, the premium? The cost of, of insuring?
I actually don't know, because I, I haven't studied the numbers in that particular, in that 2007 study. And I'm looking for the conclusion, so, because I think the conclusion would sum it up. Yeah, okay. So they concluded in 2007 that the annual savings would be 3.877 million. So if you could project that forward to 2024 and take account of the increase in costs, it would, it would in all probability be much higher.
Okay, I'm just, yeah, I just wanted to confirm the, the premium. You know, we can rely on the, the estimation. And so you did mention something about, you took into account the years during the pandemic. So I guess my concern is those were potentially anomalies? And maybe we're going through a, a series of anomalies because of the huge inflation rate? And so, yeah, how was that weighted? Because I'm sure now it might be different.
Well, by, by looking at a sufficiently long period, they were able to look right through the, the COVID pandemic period.
And then regards to the 7% increase, is that an estimate of the, the increased cost of healthcare?
Yes, it's based on that, yes, based on, on the estimate.
Medical loss ratio, does that apply to a self-insured plan?
Well, it, it, I guess the answer is it depends, right? It's certainly, the, the medical loss ratio is declared by a, an insurer when they, because we require them to do so. You know, in, in previous, when in previous positions, there was no ability for us as, as an employer to reclaim excess profits from an insurance company. Gov Guam was concerned that excess profits might be, might be earned by an insurance company. So they put a cap on the amount of profit that they could make. And they used the medical loss ratio, which is the ratio of claims to premiums, to calculate that out. We would obviously look at that too, because that's an important statistic. But it doesn't really, it, it doesn't have the same clawback effect that it does if you're fully insured.
Okay, I guess, so the question is, so that's related to Obamacare, from my understanding, that there's an 86, 14, you know, percent, 86% medical loss ratio? So that wasn't, that, that didn't apply with the insurance?
It did when we had, when we had fully insured policy. But we're not actually subject to Obamacare, but it, we did use that number.
Okay, so you, you actually voluntarily went with Obamacare with that medical loss ratio of 86%? So would that apply to the self-insurance? So you're saying it depends?
Yes, we're not, we're not there to set, to, to make a profit. We're just met there to cover the claims plus a reasonable margin.
Yeah, so then, and what you're saying is that it doesn't apply with the self-insurance? That's what I'm hearing?
Well, it does. We're, anybody would look at the ratio of claims to premiums, but the 14% specifically doesn't apply, no.
So my understanding with the self-insurance is that the premiums go to this third party? Or, sorry, a trust account, is that correct?
Yes, actually, we've decided that the, the government will collect the premiums from, from employees and retirees.
And then that goes into a trust account?
Yes.
Okay. And then basically the TPAs will then pay off the claims from that account? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, so what happens if the expenses is less than what's in the account? So the claims are less than what's in the account? What happens to that money?
It's there to, to meet claims in the future.
Okay, and what happens if the claims are more than what's in the trust account?
Then the, the government would have to top up that account like any other special fund.
So through general funds, we would have to support it through the taxes? Is that what you're saying? Or how would we top it off?
Yes, well, not through, yes. There would have to be, just like any, any other spec, it's a special fund, senators, no, no different from any other special fund. There would have to be some method of, of subsidizing that fund. However, please bear in mind, and this is very important for everybody to understand, right? That there's generally a cash advantage to self-insurance. And the reason for that is you're collecting the premiums on day one. On, on October the first, each of the government, the government entities will owe the total amount of the premiums, which will go into the trust account. But on October the first, we won't have any claims to pay because none of the claims that will have been incurred under that, under the term of that plan.
Okay.
So, and those claims will come in. And as I mentioned in, in my response to Senators Sinagastin, you know, those will be paid within the 45 days and eventually will come in. And that's generally the way, you know, any self-insured policy works, medical or otherwise.
Okay. Regards to the financial viability or stability of the self-insurance plan. Is it, must it comply with the Employment Retirement Income Security Act of 74?
No, Senator, no government plan has to conform with ERISA. No, Senator, no government plan has to conform with ERISA, insured or non-insured.
So how can the self-insurance plan ensure financial viability? I mean, how do we ensure that?
It'll be a special fund. You will see the results of the, of the special fund. And I'm sure it'll appear on the, on the, not the C R A R, but the special fund report each month.
Okay, the reserve fund, in this, so in this bill, it, this substitute bill, it has, it establishes a reserve fund. I don't know if you had a chance to take a look at the bill? So are you?
Well, this talks about a reserve, reserve fund surcharge. I assume, I assume it means that, you know, the reserve fund is a special fund that I mentioned earlier.
Is this what you had in mind? Or how is this contemplated? Maybe I can ask the chair, is this, how did we arrive at a surcharge reserve fund?
Again, as I noted earlier, Senator Perez, that the 7% was built into the fiscal year premium because when postponing the start date, this would short the amount of premiums collected. So the impetus of us being here today is to make sure that any form of self-insurance is adequately funded and doesn't shortchange our subscribers. And this, this reasoning was addresses that, and I did say that earlier. I placed this section in to ensure that concerns raised, which was building up the reserve, that this was brought by those who testified with concerns. And we are doing just that. Again, if those who stated the informational hearing and the bill, those things were brought up. And I don't know, the director is not here to tax the working families. I'm accepting a reality that if we, if we will be short of funds and if you want to take it out, my question back to the august body was how, was to ask each of my colleagues to let me know how any of you want to replenish the losses. So that was the impetus for that.
Okay, thank you for that clarification. Yes, so the bill states that to basically delay the self-insurance plan till the end of the year, which would mean it'll be a quarter behind as far as collections? I mean, can you wait, can you, is that, am I hearing correctly? That it's basically to make up, so should this bill pass? Then we'll be behind in money to pay for claims at a rate of 7%? Is that, is that, am I hearing correctly? Or maybe Director Byrne, if that's something, does that make sense? If this bill passes, right?
Okay, again, this is not something that I'm totally familiar with because it didn't, it didn't originate from the administration. But I think maybe the author of this particular part would speak. But I think what it's trying to do, and I'm not sure it necessarily achieves it, is to add to a premium under the current arrangement, a surcharge which will go into, to jumpstart this fund.
Point of information, Madam Chair, point of information.
For the record, again, this information was inserted because this would happen if we postponed the date. And if we didn't postpone the date, then we wouldn't need this.
I understand.
And again, as a conservative estimate based on what was noted earlier, this is what was proffered.
Understand, I just want a point of information for Mr. Byrne. Thank you, Mr. Byrne. That was not a part of the, our submission further. Okay, that was the committee's insertion, okay? So that's where it came from.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, man.
Senator, you still have 31 seconds.
I think that's my questions for now. I'll reserve it for the next round, thank you.
Thank you very much, Senator Perez. Senator Shelton, do you have any questions for the panel?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Thank you to the panel for being here. Mr. Byrne, can you remind us what year was that we recently, that we rolled over the insurance from Aetna?
Okay, we didn't roll over from Aetna, we extended open enrollment.
Okay, the extension for Aetna. And is there, tell us what, what caused that? Why did we do that?
Do you want to go ahead? I'm going to ask Leo, because she's responsible for the open enrollment.
So, so really, the extension when we went into Aetna to enroll past the fiscal year was one primarily just to kind of give it more opportunity for employees to enroll. And it was actually at the request to, from the governor's office, to allow for more enrollment. The issue when you do something like that is that you're passing the 10-1 effective date. And so when you have individuals who are enrolled in the prior year and then you start rolling over to 10-1, there's a little confusion because not everyone has made a choice to enroll. So when they start going to the clinics in 10-1, the clinics do not know, are they still enrolled in the prior year or are they making changes? So that year was a little bit on the confusion side. And I, and we really should not be extending open enrollment past the 9/30/23.
And so if we were to pass this bill here today, what would we have to do? We would roll over, we would extend a period, how would it work?
So if this was to pass, and I noted on section two that they wanted to extend it to December 31st, 2023, what will happen is, first of all, deductibles will have to restart. 10-1, everyone will go down to zero and it'll restart. So let's say that we roll over till December 31st and then we come forward for new rates for FY24. Employees who enroll into a new plan will have to restart that deductible again. So now you're dealing with employees who maybe could have gone in and seen something within the first few months of the fiscal year, had an MRI, endoscopy, colonoscopy, the higher end, and then maybe getting closer to their deductible, then they would have to restart that. It'll set it all over again.
Okay, and you mentioned there was confusion when we extended that period in the past. And so what are some lessons that we learned from that experience to help? If we, if the case were that this bill were to pass and we were to roll over, how can we ease that confusion?
Well, Senator, I'm not quite sure because, first of all, to roll over, we really need to go and talk to the current carriers. Right, right now, we have, negotiations have been completed. There are, there is a carrier that's ready to perform services for FY24. But we were to roll over, we need to, first of all, there's going to be, we're going to have to discuss for a rate because at this point, we can't guarantee those rates. Those rates were FY23. And if we do go for it, there's no guarantee that we have any negotiating power for FY24 with the current carriers.
Okay, so since the time this bill has been placed on the agenda, there has been no discussion with our current carriers?
No, Senator, and to add to, or respond again to your question, can we avoid the confusion? No, we have to accept it because at the beginning of the year, payroll departments throughout the government and the retirement fund set the deductions rate for each of the employees. And if there were a change partway through the year, we'd have to do it all over again.
Okay, I appreciate your candid answer, Mr. Byrne. I'm not a fan of, you know, accepting confusion or accepting difficulties that we're going to pass on to our Gov Guam employees and retirees. I hope that there is a better answer that we can come up with, more information that we can be, that we can put on the table here to make an educated decision on how to vote on this measure. Mr. Byrne, is there anything that the decision that we make here in this legislature on Bill 154, if we were to pass this bill, would it impact any other contractual agreements for the Gov Guam, for you, the Department of Administration, for our entire government, and our third-party administrator? What has already transpired, are we, if we were to pass this bill?
Senator, this is a procurement like any other procurement. So we went through the process, we advised the winning bidder, in this case Select Care, that they were the winner, and we immediately started discussions with them about implementation. They have done a lot of work on implementation because there's a lot of work to do before October the 1st. And I believe, in line with what Mr. Campello was saying the other night, they've initiated discussions with providers in their network in order to make sure that they understand the takeover process. It's a bid, you know, and so at the end of each, each negotiation, there's a possibility that we're going to switch provider, whether it's insured or self-insured. And inevitably, that requires a lot of arrangement. We've done our best to make sure that this is minimized. We're going to roll over as many people, because we have the census, as many people from the current plan to the new plan. But at that point, anybody has the opportunity to add or delete dependents or change their plan for one reason or other.
Okay, so there is already work being done to prepare for the new fiscal year. And we just spoke a little bit about the potential confusion that could happen. We really don't know if we were to roll over the current plan, what these providers would say to us. Is there a possibility that you could get us some information from our current providers to let us know if there would be any cost adjustment? We know inflation is happening all around us now. What, what are those numbers going to look like? I understand the cost-saving component of this bill before us, but if we're really not going to be able to save any money by passing this bill because there is going to be a cost adjustment regardless, we'd like to know that. I would like to know that to make this decision.
So Senator, just so you know, behind the scenes also, I've already kind of, you know, the carriers hear this going on. And so in the past also, if we were to roll over, these carriers will have to go and talk to their consultants and readjust and look at the claims. And they're going to have to forecast again. And so that's a whole new set of discussion again, that they need to go back and have their experts crunch those numbers. And that's something that basically, just through the negotiations, is not something you could do quickly. Noting that October 1st is really around the corner. And the last thing we want to do is send someone in 10-1 and tell them, hang on, we're still trying to figure out, are we rolling over or are we, you know, going for it with what we already negotiated?
This sets a very dangerous precedent, quite honestly. We followed the laws of Guam to proceed forward with self-insurance as it was prescribed by the Guam Legislature many years ago. We've already had experience with our self-insurance for dental and pharmacy. We've done very well with that. We were able to cost contain. And, you know, one of the things that really concerns me is that if you muddy the water, I'm sorry that I'm using very less, less than complimentary terms, but it is what it is. If we were to do what this bill intends to do, we have patients that are already in the midst of service. And when you do this, there is a potential catastrophic unforeseen loss. Because what happens is that the individual who's on a either $1,500 deductible or $2,000 deductible starts over. Because legally speaking, you can't all of a sudden rebake a pie that fell down or a cake that's supposed to rise, it fell. So how do you mitigate that? And I believe with self-insurance, and Mr. Augustine had mentioned earlier that he was concerned about potential financial risk. And when you look at self-insurance, you're really looking at cost savings. When you're looking at self-insurance, you're looking at flexibility. By doing this bill, you're not giving us flexibility. And we will lose control. And self-insurance is all about taking control and improving cash flow. I mean, that's critical mass because this is happening nationwide where we have self-insurance, even with private corporations. So however, it also carries a financial risk. This will be the first financial risk. And the committee injected a reserve fund surcharge of 7% increase. And I think that's admirable, that it has anticipated that if there is to be of some sort of a nature of a catastrophic event, that possibility that's unforeseen, that, but you know, it's like a Band-Aid. We will have to start all over negotiating because these folks that have already been told that they are the exclusive third-party administrator. And so when you look at this whole idea of resources, your challenges, you're building capacity on the reserve. We know that this happens with self-insurance. And really, with self-insurance, the goal specifically is the potential to realize cost savings. That's, that's the main reason why we look at self-insurance. And by setting aside money that may or may not be paid out in claims, okay? So that being taken into consideration versus paying premiums to an insurance company as a fixed expense where the money is gone forever. So we're taking a different look at how we do business and to the best that we could. Remember that we didn't have choice before. We went from choice to no choice. And you saw me individually stand up against that, that when we had Aetna, it was no choice. Then I pushed on behalf of the retirees that we should have choice again. But then we've seen how that happened, if you don't mind.
But Joseph, Joe, you're saying that we went from choice to no choice. Unless you haven't read this selection, we are going back to no choice.
That being said, I thank you for injecting.
I just wanted to make sure you were on this because your train was rolling that we went that direction, and that's exactly what this is doing.
Correct, but at that time, it was insurance. We're talking about self-insurance, Senator, my dear nephew, that's what it is. We are now looking at self-insurance. And so self-insurance generally offers more control. And it also offers personalization that a fully insured approach. And I beg the indulgence of the senators to really consider that. This is, as Joanna used to say, this is the Maullig thing to do. I'm serious, I mean, come on. We've gone through the process, we've made good faith efforts, we've moved forward, we're ready. We've had this experience before where we went from a couple of companies to one. And as you so stated, we're going back to one. Well, we have that experience on how to mitigate that, if that is what you're concerned about.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Madam Chair, my speaker, you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for allowing me the opportunity to speak on my turn. I have several questions, and I promise I'll make this quick. I have several questions, and I promise I'll make this quick. I think I'll have Mr. Byrne, ask Mr. Byrne this one. Are the current insurance providers for this fiscal year willing to roll over existing plans? If so, how would that work? And how much more would that cost compared to current fiscal year insurance plans? And also compared to the cost of self-insurance? I know that's a big question, but just hoping I can get a response from you.
Yes, yes, Senator, that's a very big question. I don't know that we know the answer to that. That would be like doing the procurement exercise all over again. And we're really not in a position to do that. Leo spoke about the difficulty of keeping the current rates. We don't know what the rates would be, especially if it's mandated. You know, mandate obviously removes a negotiating ability. If you tell someone they must do something, they don't get the opportunity not to do it. So, you know, a mandate must increase costs.
Okay. Then, just based on your, I thought earlier you did say that there was a newsletter with rates. And if so, do you have those rates? Can you pass it out?
Yes, it's being published this afternoon, and we can hand it out.
Can you hand it to us right now?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, can I ask the Sergeant of Arms to please just make copies for that while I ask a couple of questions, unless you want to take a moment's recess? Because I do have a couple of more questions.
Well, is any of your questions relative to the rates?
No, not necessarily.
Okay, well, so for the interest of time, why don't we do that? Go ahead and continue, okay? And then we can.
Thank you, sorry.
Point of information. I thought he said there was a whole letter in addition to rates that was disseminated. We haven't seen that, Mr. Byrne. If we could get a copy of the whole.
Yes, it's a letter regarding open enrollment, Madam Speaker.
Would Leo like to add to that, Mr. Chair? Do you have any comment to that also? Based on the speaker's comments, questions?
So can we get the whole document?
Mr. Byrne, do you have the letter too?
So, sorry, so let me clarify. Those are the rates. Okay, so the open enrollment letter, I don't have a copy with me. It was sent out from our office, distributed government-wide to all employees and autonomous. I'm sure the legislature HR office may have already received it. I can certainly have our office resend again. I just don't have that with me now. But I did provide a copy of the rates that were signed for FY '24. That circulator that was sent out really kind of rolls out the open enrollment timeline and what employees need to do and just the different venues. But I can have them resend it. It really went out just when I was on my way down.
Why don't we do this in the interest of time and everything? We'll have our clerk check to see whether it's not in our, okay? And then we can have that. But let's take a moment's recess so we can see that, so that we can get that group. Because you may have asked questions with regard to the letter too, okay? So let's take a moment's recess, okay? Okay, the committee is back from recess. Madam Vice Speaker, you still have the floor?
Thank you.
Can you please be quiet in the back? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank DOA for sharing the program rates with us. And a clarification, it will be out with, this week or today?
It's already public.
Oh, it's already public. Thank you very much. That was for the listening audience. The other question I had, Mr. Chair, is a number of constituents have reached out to us, and they were being advised by their doctors that although premiums may be low, medication will be high, especially those coming from Take Care whose medications are covered at this time. So how do you alleviate the concerns of our patients coming in from Take Care? And do you know if Take Care clinics will be covered in the self-insurance plan? That's another hard question.
Okay, I'm not sure which providers gave our employees and retirees such information or how they based their comments on, because I don't think they would know. The issue is, I think the issue is this, right? That at the moment, there are certain preventative medicines for which there is a zero co-pay. And I have been in touch with a provider who has advocated keeping that kind of process in place, especially for medicines that address the rather high incidence of diabetes on the island. Because obviously, we have to keep, you know, diabetics, sugar levels under control. We do not intend to make a very big departure, if any, from that list because we recognize that a, money spent on pharmacies, on pharmaceuticals now generally means less money spent on medical care later. But we're only, we're only talking, Madam Vice Speaker, about the co-pay, not the total cost of the medication.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. And based on that, I'll go ahead and yield my time. And if I have any questions for the second round, I'll go ahead and proceed then. So thank you.
Thank you very much, Madam Vice Speaker. I think that, well, because we, for the sake of wanting to move, Madam Speaker, you want?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right, so it was explained to us that this bill allows for a extension of the current coverage for a few more months and... But that they would add on a 7% increase to go towards a reserve fund surcharge deposited into the trust accounts. But if, so they said that the current contract allows for this extension. Is that right?
That extension is on the premise that we lost coverage or we don't have coverage. We did successfully negotiate for FY '24, so there is something in place. That 90-day is to protect in the event that Gab Guam does not have coverage to move forward with, which is not the case.
But the 90 days and if that was going to be used, the rates would be the same?
I don't believe so. I think we would also have to still go back to the carriers also. And if we, so you're saying, Senator, if we do the 90-day invoke the HIPAA, the continuity? I believe those rates would have to be negotiated again. So that 90-day is meant as a protection in the event Gab Guam does not have coverage, is meant to continue coverage on, still negotiate the rates so that we on the side can continue to procure.
But it's a contract clause, right? In the current contract? That would extend it 90 days? That would allow it to be extended 90 days? That's how the author of the bill explained it. Is it some, what are you citing when you say yes? Or what are you citing?
On the contract, there is a.
In the contract?
Yes.
Okay, so in the contract, what does it say about the rates? If it goes for the 90 days?
I'm sorry, apologies, I don't have the contract with me.
All right.
I apologize, Madam Speaker. Colleagues, can we please, just so that we can hear, can we just lower down? Speaker, you may proceed.
Okay, thanks. Because the bill seems to imply that the rates would be the same going forward for this until December 31, and that we would add on a 7%. So I was going to ask you about if we proceed, so the current carriers would get the premiums, but what if there were no claims? Would they refund those premiums? Or would the insurer employee be able to carry forward the deductible, any deductibles that they had spent?
Okay, so first off, with the deductible, if we were to roll over, those deductibles will have to restart. It'll have to restart again.
That's pursuant to the contract? That that would not, that, so that 90-day period, there's no other provisions in the contract regarding that 90-day period?
The contract would be silent. The contract would be silent on deductibles. It's, because deductibles are just a part of the plan.
Somebody mentioned that if there's patients in the middle of big treatments, what happens to them?
This is always a concern, and Mr. Cameron can speak in a minute.
Well, you're always talking about these catastrophic losses.
I just want to know, according to the contract, yeah, so exactly what does the contract say, or this new one, say about those who are undergoing? We're switching over to self-insure, if we switch to self-insurance, and you said at the hearing that FHP Clinic, for example, might not be covered under, as a provider going forward? What happens to those people who are currently under cancer care at FHP Clinic? Do they have, are, yeah, they're going to have to, what happens to them?
Senator, just to confirm, right? So if, I'm going to kind of strip away your question. If we were going from FY23 into the new FY24 contract under self-funded, what will happen to those patients currently in the hospital? So benefits, coverage will continue. It's not meant to disrupt anything. And again, to clarify, going to the FY23 contract into the FY24 self-funded that we negotiated, Select Care will assume responsibility of all patients, even if they're in the clinic. Any member currently, for example, like if they're under Take Care, we have the safety net. It's called positive enrollment. So what will happen is that all our members will continue on to Select Care under the self-funded. All the dental members will continue on to Net Care as a self-funded. If they were in the hospital, Select Care will automatically, effective 12 midnight, pick up our employees, again, moving into the self-funded FY24 rates. And I'm hoping that that was your question.
All right. At the hearing, we also asked about, you know, whether there were any rules that have been promulgated yet as to how this would be managed, particularly on the government's side. For example, the example was given during the hearing about could the governor, if a claim was denied by Select Care, the TPP, could the governor come in and override that and say, cover this? And the answer was yes. And so I thought that that should be governed by rules. And then in the discussion, I think it was said that there should be rules of appeal. And I'm asking, have those been promulgated yet?
Well, if I remember the discussion correctly, Madam Speaker, Mr. Campillo said that their processes have, they have the rules, because they're managing the claims, and they have an appeal process. Yes, you know, the governor is the governor, so basically, I think she could step in on anything, anywhere. But in most cases, and I think he went on to say this, that most appeals are resolved within their appeal process.
No, they made it sound like they were suggesting to us that we follow the federal procure, I mean, at least one of them said, we, the government, should adopt the federal appeals process or something, that it was, they, of course, we're going to appeal for, through Select Care, their denial. But when it comes to going above Select Care to the governor, how is that going to be managed? How are, how are we going to know whether they're making, when you're saying the governor? I don't think the governor can do that right now, can she? Go in and tell a carrier to cover that under our contract? But under this, because we're the self-insurer, we can, or she can. And so you're saying you're not going to promulgate any rules to govern that?
At the moment, we don't have those rules, and the situation at the moment doesn't apply. I was content with Mr. Campillo's answer. I can't imagine that this is going to be a very frequent occasion, but we will certainly, you know, there's been a lot of arrangements you had to make between making the decision and getting this in place, and we will certainly look at those rules if necessary.
That's kind of disturbing to me, because from day one, when the government announced self-care, that's the number-one question I've been getting from doctors and other people, is what are the rules going to be on the government's side? When the government gets to say, cover this or don't cover this, when, you know, after the Select Care's decision? And I brought that up, and I thought that that's something that you were going to actively work on, and I just don't like that idea. Because he said very clearly, yes, of course, the governor can come in and tell us, and we don't want politics in our health care system, I mean, at least in our health care insurance. So I thought that was clear. That would be a great way to make sure and give everybody assurance that that's not going to happen. That's one thing. Can you confirm? There was a sheet going around before, but can you confirm, you denied at the hearing that these amounts, that you didn't know whether these were accurate or not, or you didn't think they were accurate? But for example, on our current prescription self-insurance, do the claims exceed the premiums that were paid?
We're still working on this, Senator, but I did note, when I went back and looked at the numbers, that the claims do not include the rebates that are due to us at the end of the year on pharmacy claims. So that yet has to be taken into account.
But how would we make a decision that self-insurance is the best way to go without knowing that, whether, under the pharmacy self-insurance, we were meeting our expectations or not? Whether the claims are exceeding the premiums or not?
It's the same as any other procurement decision. We took the best advice. We looked at the actuary's report. We debated the actuary's report. The negotiating team went through a very long and grueling process. And perhaps I should also add that, you know, the Attorney General had a representative present to us like any other procurement throughout this process. And so I don't know where those numbers come from, Senator. I haven't seen those numbers.
Well, I'm asking you what the numbers are. You've denied these numbers, but what are the numbers for the pharmacy? The reason why I ask is because it's kind of like, we're trying to convince the rest of the government of Guam, employees and retirees, that we are going to embark on this great adventure, this risky adventure. And we might disagree how risky or less risky, but knowing what happened with the pharmacy was supposed to be a big part of that, that, yes, of course, we have actuaries to predict and make expectations, but the actual experience should be also very telling. And you're telling us you don't know the actual experience when you made the decision to go forward and do this for medical. And that's also concerning. But I have so many more questions, Madam Chair.
We're still in the middle, we're still in the middle of that, the policy period, you know? Lloyds, Lloyds doesn't close their insurance book for three years as they wait for information to come in. So I'm not sure that it's sound necessarily to look at any one small amount in isolation.
Well, don't you always look at actual experience for the past year when you're going to go make negotiations for the next year?
Speaker, I will allow you to come back on the second round, please.
Yes, and that's what our actuary did.
Senator Joanne Brown, I will acknowledge you at this time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. I certainly appreciate our Director of Administration, the panel coming here this afternoon to answer questions. And, you know, as we venture down this new road, the most critical thing, I think, is we need to get information to ourselves and our employees and retirees out there, they're going to be impacted by this new health care plan. In general, I wanted to ask if the government proceeds down during this road, what happens with the existing employees that are under the two separate plans? Does this merge into one plan? Because we've had Take Care and Select Care this past year, and I see now from the letter you're providing today that, you know, you're going to be having these informational briefings during the month of September, so that people can get more information. But if you can just give us a summary, what happens? Where do we go from the existing operations of where we are now with two separate carriers to this, you know, self-insured Gobom plan?
Yes, there will be one plan administered by Select Care.
Okay. So all the employees and retirees now, if you're on Take Care this year, everything all merges into one pot now?
Yes.
Okay. So there's no option? So we just have the single company for our health care, different company for dental, or whatever the case may be, whoever?
Yes. Net Care is the TPA for dental.
Okay. What, and this rate card that you gave us, I'm glad to finally see a rate card, because that was the biggest concern that we have. And I see you're also providing one, one was passed out here from 2022. And if we're going to look at this, obviously, it's attractive because the amounts are substantially lower. And that was a concern certainly from year to year, seeing the amounts grow, by gosh, substantial amounts. I mean, I know some people that pay a pretty good chunk of change every two weeks out of their paycheck just for health insurance, because their family may have certain specialist needs for medical care. They, you know, they almost are paying at the high end just to make sure they may have access, if the need is there, for treatment. And then in terms of the services now, I know you elaborated earlier that the employees and retirees are still going to be able to get pretty much, is it going to be now the Select Care Network for Health Care, Net Care Network for Dental? What's the deal with that?
Yes. Yes, that's the case. And if I could just elaborate on what you were just talking about, those who are paying a high premium were those who elected to pay the premium rates for Select Care, who at that, in the last, or the current, I should say, insurance period, they made that choice, and they had to pay the whole of the difference between the Take Care rate and the Select Care rate. By merging them, as you put it, we're taking out that difference, and that's actually what I was referring to earlier about the selective enrollment risk that each of the carriers has.
Well, that would be good news, certainly, for those that have, because, as I mentioned, you know, there's some that do it out of necessity, because it's not, you know, if you're an individual yourself, fine, but if you have your dependents, your spouse that are on with you, I mean, it almost became cost prohibitive for, you know, anyone, even if they were earning six figures, to be able to afford the high rate of insurance and, you know, just make basic, you know, make their mortgage payments, car payments, buying groceries. Are you guys prepared? Is everything going to be in place to begin this new year with regards to health care? Is it going to be uninterrupted in terms of, and I know the speaker just asked, because obviously, we have employees and retirees that are currently going to treatment, some are off-island right now and maybe getting care that is going to bridge over this time. Is there any impact to their care, and what do they do from there? As far as following up, making sure that their, you know, approvals are, I mean, if you were with Take Care last time, you got approval, and now all of a sudden, you're under Select Care umbrella, where does that put you, particularly if you're off-island right now getting care, and you're not able to come back to get all these briefings? Where does that put you?
Yeah, thank you. That's a very important question. And the minimization of what's called disruption, and any change in a health care year is something that we certainly devote a lot of attention to. There's, you're right, there are people off-island, there are people currently inpatients, and we have certain, a group of people who are in the middle or have completed step therapy. And all of these conditions, we try and make sure that the disruption to the pharmacy formulary, to that issue with step therapy, we don't want to have people start that step therapy all over again to their disadvantage. We do try to make sure that that disruption is as low as we possibly can.
You know, information was going out as a result of this informational briefing that happened a couple of weeks ago, that employees or retirees that were on Take Care, that their rates were going to go up, and those who were in Select Care were going to go down. Do you know how that information got out there? Because obviously, what you're providing today is a very different presentation, is that there's going to be a single carrier. So do, can you clarify that? Because, you know, that information has gone out there, and people are under that impression that that's the case. So if that is not the case, can you clarify information with regards to that question?
Yes, I can. And that came out of the public hearing. Select Care, current Select Care subscribers, premiums are going to go down. Originally, we were working, and this was a mucking process when we had the public hearing, there was going to be an increase to Take Care subscribers, but it's been decided there will be no increase to Take Care subscribers. So current Take Care subscribers will see the same premiums. Select Care subscribers will see a reduction of premiums, and it varies depending upon the class that you're in, between, the highest is 96%, and I think the lowest is 48%.
But, okay, now, if we come under, at the beginning of the new fiscal year, does everybody fall under this rate card that you're providing today? Does this level off? Is everybody getting this now?
Yes.
Not different scales for different?
Not different scales, no.
What is the impact with the government share now that we will be paying under this self-insurance versus what we paid this past year? We're assuming it's got to be a better deal. Does it go down what the government share is going to be, or is it equal or more?
It doesn't go down. It goes up by, and it depends, because we know, this is, as I was trying to explain before, you know, this is an estimate, right? We're embarking upon a year based on estimates. But our estimate is, and that comes from our actuaries, that had we not done this, the government share of premiums would have gone up between 12% to 14%, and these go up by somewhere around, under 10%.
So the biggest change, then, by having the setup the way you have it now, is the government pretty much carrying the liability?
The government carries, obviously, the government carries the liability, because basically, the government, you know, for years and years, has paid about 70% of the liability of health insurance. So in any increase, it's obviously going to take that share, but the increase is less to the government than it would have been under our study from full insurance.
Well, one of the things also the speaker had mentioned, which I concur, and I think we have to put something in place if it's not there, I agree, we don't want to politicize the health care process and decide, you know, somebody in a political position decides if there's an appeal, that they get to make that decision. I just think that that just doesn't fly. So if there are rules or regulations or procedures we need to put in place, and that's something we definitely need to look at, because we don't want to politicize this process any further. I'll wait for the next round. Thank you for responding to my questions. Thank you.
Just to clarify something that I think the speaker said, Select Care, Mr. Campillo has confirmed that the appeals process, whatever it is, must comply with the federal ACA law.
I appreciate the information. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Brown. Senator Parkinson, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Byrne, does the current contract outline the maximum number of days a contract may be rolled over as is?
Please, I'm going to ask Ms. Candace to answer, because she's the expert.
Sure, whoever's best equipped to answer.
So yes, it outlines for 90 days, but again, that's on the premise, if we didn't have coverage for the next fiscal year, it's meant as a protection, and which is not the case, because we successfully negotiated for FY24.
Okay. So just so I understand it clearly, there is a 90-day rollover provision in the contract, but that only applies if we didn't obtain another form of insurance?
Right. If we lost coverage, if we don't have a coverage for the next fiscal year.
Okay. And because, and because we have this new coverage, that rollover provision no longer is through contract, it can only be done through statute. Do I understand that correctly? Like, there's no, there's nothing in the contract that allows for a 90-day extension Because we have a new, in the previous contract.
So that 90-day, Senator, is in the event, for example...
So that 90-day center is in the event, for example, like GOV Guam lost coverage, we didn't have anything for the next fiscal year. It's meant to protect and establish for continuity of coverage for our members. And so now that, that contract, now we're going to the FY '24, and that we do have, we did conclude negotiations, so now that 90-day provision that's instituted to protect us is basically invalid.
Okay. Has the Attorney General been asked to consider whether or not a Guam law can require a rollover provision that longer than an existing contract allows? No, okay. And I know this was asked earlier, but just so I'm clear, has anyone asked if carriers would continue to participate, or would they consider litigation in this situation?
We officially have not asked because we were proceeding, going for it with FY '24, so officially we have not approached them to, based on, I guess, what's being presented to us.
Okay. Did DOA or the administration seek the 7% surcharge placed in the bill on the floor?
No, it's not, it's not our bill, Senator, so we didn't.
Okay. And have you folks done a rate comparison of FY '24 rates under a traditional insurance system versus a self-insured system? And just kind of, what was your findings there? What did that reflect?
No, we didn't, Senator, because the RFP was for a TPA, not full insurance. We relied on our actuaries, who, as I mentioned, do this day by day, to determine whether they thought there was some advantage with the process that we finally actually engaged.
Okay, and just so I'm understanding this process correctly, the actuary report indicates that a self-insurance model would save us money?
No, Senator, it wouldn't save us money. It would contain the cost increase.
It would contain the cost increase. Could you please elaborate what that means for the viewing audience?
Yes, you know, I think I tried to answer that before, but I'll try a different way of doing it again.
Yeah.
If, if, in their view, had we followed the previous process and gone through a fully insured, fully insured procurement process, it was their opinion that their premiums would have, or their premium bids would have increased by somewhere around 14%. Had we, but they believed that what, the way that we were processing, it was going to increase. We're never going to, I spoke about this at some length right at the beginning, we're never going to avoid cost increases in medical care. It's something capped at around about 10%.
Okay, so let me rephrase my question. How much would the fully insured have cost versus what this is costing, the self-insurance? Because the way I'm understanding it, under both programs, the price would go up, but I'm just trying to understand how much it would go up on a self-insurance versus how much it would go up versus a traditional full insurance program?
I'm just trying to find the numbers. So on a fully insured basis, it looks like, and it's a range, right?
Yeah, I understand.
It would be like, the total premiums would be 141 to 155 million.
Okay.
And on a, I'm not sure I find the numbers easily, but on a, on the basis that we finally went on, it was something around between 120 and 135 million.
Okay, could you repeat those numbers one more time?
On an insured basis, it was 141 to 156, or thereabouts, and on our basis, it was something around about 135 to 140 million.
So we're looking at the potential cost savings in the millions, if not potentially tens of millions?
Yes, and that was the, the issue with adverse selection that I mentioned, that it would get priced into a fully insured policy.
I see, I see. Because we had multiple insurers, even though the mandates were requiring similar levels of care, one would be more expensive than others by a significant margin.
Because they, they would want to price for an adverse selection, because obviously it's not in their interest to make an unwriting loss. So they bill that in, and each of the, or however how many bidders, each of the bidders would do that.
And finally, there seems to be this belief that we're conducting a process that has never been done before, whether for dental or pharmacy. Have we done self-insurance before and has it worked?
Well, the government is self-insured in a number of areas. It's, you know, for instance, if you look at the financial statements of GPA, there's a self-insurance reserve there. So they build up a self-insurance reserve rather than going out and getting commercial insurance for some of their disaster losses. So certainly, that government entity has done it. I believe there's a small self-insurance reserve at UOG. But universally, this is not, you know, this isn't, this isn't something that people don't do the world over, and I believe, well, I don't believe, at the public hearing, Mr. Christostamo of Netcare said that they deal with many entities that have self-insurance, and he cautioned not to look at single, single years or single figures. It's something that, that rolls over several years, and the advantage sometimes isn't seen for several years, other than the cash flow advantage I spoke about earlier. And that was his experience with some of his clients, where they're the TPA for their insured plans.
And I guess, are all three branches of the government involved in the negotiation team?
Yes.
Okay.
Except the judiciary has the option to not take it up. So they were involved in the negotiations, but they took the decision not to take it up, but that only affects their active employees. Their retired employees are covered by this plan.
Okay, so the judiciary is opting out of this?
Yes.
But this is going to affect the executive and the legislative branch?
Yes.
Okay, and who appoints the negotiating team for the executive branch?
It's by statute.
By statute?
Yeah.
Okay, and by statute, like, who are, I guess I'm just trying to get a sense of...
You said the 10.
Okay. And who appoints the legislature member of negotiating team that selected the self-insurance?
Speaker.
The speaker, all right. And, yeah, I guess that's it, that's all I got for questions.
Point of information, though, I don't think the team selected self-insurance, wasn't it you, Mr. Byrne? I don't know. I thought I heard you earlier say there was a vote?
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes. Maybe Mr. Cameron would like to speak to that, because he was one of the voters.
Was this, was the decision to go with self-insurance?
Correct. That was by a vote.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
Madam Speaker, it was by a vote and a unanimous vote with the descending of only the judiciary, but the rest were unanimous.
Thank you, Mr. Cameron. Mr. Parkinson, you, the rest of your time. Senator Duñez, you are up.
Si, duez, Madam Chair. So we have the rate card for the employee share. What is the government share?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
If you have the rate card for the employee share, what is the government share?
We would have to give you a different rate card for that.
No, we need that now, because you've had a significant change from the roundtable that we had, and you've adopted basically all of the rate, most of the rates, and you've, so you said, like you said, Take Care has no change. So how did you make up the difference? What is the government?
We would have to provide that to you.
Madam Chair, I don't think we can proceed without knowing what the government share I mean, we certainly have to have that before tomorrow, because, Madam Chair, we just finished a budget. And if the government share has gone up significantly, then that, our budget is out the window, and we need to know that, because we're going to have to adjust our budget.
Senator Duñez, if I may, I'm going to just take a moment's recess, and I will be right back. And we'll be right back. The Committee of the House is back from recess. We last left with Senator Duaneus. I'll go ahead and acknowledge you this time.
Okay, Madam Chair, I've been assured that by the time we go to the second round, we'll get the number from Department of Administration. What the government's share will be. So as we continue now. Mr. Byrne, you state that you've reviewed the bill and you see Section 3, and you're stating that this is not at the request of Department of Administration. Is that what you're saying? The 7% reserve.
Yes, Senator.
So if we removed it, it wouldn't give you any trepidation?
That's an interesting way of putting it, but yes.
The second question I have for you, because there seems to be a lot of resistance in this hall to remove it, so I needed you on the record saying it wouldn't keep you up at night. The second thing I wanted to ask you was the codification of this selection. I think, do you see a necessity to codify this in law? Since you say you decided and you've made the decision already?
I'm not sure I understand, I don't understand the question.
Okay, so maybe I'll direct you to Section 4. If we read Section 4, basically it's a reiteration of the selection that you've made. Do you see that as something that needs to be codified into law since you've already made that decision under your executive power?
The governor made that determination, so it's, you know, I don't think it does need to be codified.
Mr. Byrne, you made the comment to one of my other colleagues when she was asking about the issue of it will come now under one umbrella as a, as a, as an exclusive program. Many doctors, to include very prominent ones that have been on the record on this. Dr. Wen actually asked me to ask this question. What happens to all of those patients who then migrate over to the Select Care Program? But can they still see their, their medical professionals at FHP?
I'm not, I haven't verified this fully because it just came up as a question, the way you put it. But according to Select Care, they can, but, but it would be an out-of-network provider, therefore it would be subject to the deductible and the copay. We obviously would wish FHP to be in the network. But I'm also aware from personal experience that access to actual physicians at FHP is a very long waiting period. The advantage we get from FHP in particular is their, is their provision of urgent care after hours. And that is something that Select Care is looking at. But Select Care would also advise that there are certain providers who aren't in the take care network who would have access, and now employees and retirees would have access to those providers, including an enhanced, enhanced network on, outside Guam because of they use the United Health, United Healthcare Network.
Mr. Byrne, explain out-of-network when they go and seek care there. Does that mean that they're covered by their insurance plan?
Yes, it's a, it's, it, it depends from provider to provider. And we're used, going to use the net, the Select Care definition because we're using Select Care as a TPA. But if you look at the schedule of benefits, when that comes out, right? And we've not changed the benefits, but the schedule of benefits has two columns. It has what you have to pay to a in-network provider, and it has what you have to pay to an outside network provider. The amount that you pay to an out-of-network provider, and my understanding is that means that there is no provider contract between the administrator and the provider. There is an amount that's paid, but it's not as advantageous as if you were a network provider.
So these subscribers could see significant self-pay and increase to their out-of-pocket cost without a contract and an established in-network agreement?
If they chose to continue to, you try to use FHP.
Mr. Byrne, you talk about your knowledge of FHP, and I'm using this on a basis of, once again, providers sending this information to my office, that they're, they're, they have a lot of subscribers. But according to the, the providers and those that are providing our office with information, they have no capacity to take any new patients. In fact, they're overloaded themselves. So how does that work?
Well, I'm only speaking from kind of personal family experience that, and I'm, you know, HIPAA would not allow me to go into great detail on that. I don't know what, what the capacity is of each provider. I have spoken to some providers, not that, not, not Dr. Wen. And, you know, I, I'm, his capacity, right, is a matter for him, right? I don't know what that is. And, but we're trying to resolve this provider issue. And, and the basic provider problem is that there are insufficient primary doctors on Guam. That's the problem that needs to be solved. And we won't solve it unless we, unless we look through the problem, right? If we, if we have an insurance carrier in the middle, that's certainly invisible to us. So that's one of the advantages of self-insurance.
Don't, don't you think without giving that some more time and talking to providers and trying to figure out why they're flooding our offices with this information and that contemplation, you can't see that you may exacerbate the situation to a great degree?
Well, I have no, I have no assurance that they would address it. And I would point out that, you know, we've been, as I mentioned earlier, we've been dealing with a, the RFP was issued in April. So I know it's not possible just suddenly to generate doctors. I know we've, we've succeeded in getting a gastroenterologist on island recently, which is a big plus in the specialty care field. I would hope that we can get primary doctors because they're the, you know, they're the gatekeepers of, of this whole process. But that's something that I, I can't really answer because I don't have the information now, at this moment, but I would have the information under this process.
And you would have the information over an extended process equally?
Yes, I would have that information. Well, I don't know that I would if it was, if it was just a rollover, there would be no, there would be no incumbent on them to give us that information.
But that's exactly why they're expressing themselves this way, is that they would if this contemplation were not issued in weeks, but perhaps over months, so this discussion could take place and this stuff can be figured out. Anyways, I think you know that I know and we know the answer to this question.
And if that was the case, I wish they had said that.
I mean, I think it was absolutely a surprise. I mean, it was a surprise to us. This announcement came in, in days into the budget session with, with no, with no letter or direction to this legislature that this was the process. And I, I know my next colleague will sort that out in terms of how selection happened as well. Anyways, my final question. Many of us on this floor, and especially during the budget process, had a realization under numerous circumstances that this government is severely in debt to several institutions, namely our hospital. How can you sit here and tell us to trust you with managing these millions of dollars when our only civilian hospital is $30 million in arrears with its payables to its vendors?
Are you equating the fortunes of the hospital with the government as a whole?
I am, Mr. Byrne, because you, I just asked you a question where we don't even know the government's share. And if the government is going to have to pony up money beyond what this plan and what the current contribution rates are going to be, you're doggone right I'm asking you that. Because if we can't even pay the payables of $30 million up at GMH, I'm going to tell you this right now, Mr. Byrne, I do not trust you to pay into this plan.
Well, that's your decision, Senator. I, I can tell you that the bills that come through Department of Administration are paid. And we're certainly not going to solve the problems of the hospital by not paying their bills. And that might be the case with a, with a rollover. One of the providers that currently does so apparently doesn't pay their bills. If, if it's the government of Guam, they will pay their bills. So I would suggest to you, sir, that that would be an advantage for GMH.
Madam Chair, to make that statement on the record, I think that neither provider or either company right now could be pinned. And I think that's an inappropriate statement, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Senator Frank Blas, you may proceed.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and thank you for the panel for, for being here. You know, I, first off, I want to make, in the, in the bill. First off, when we first introduced the bill, it was to hold off for about a year so you can get things here. Then there was a compromise, and I recognize it because it was 90 days, and I know where the 90 day came from. This is in a press release from the governor's office dated August 24, 2023. Now, before I read this, can I confirm that you said that if we're going to roll over 90-day extension on this, on the contract, we have to renegotiate?
Well, I, I didn't say that.
Yeah, but that's what I said.
Perhaps you would confirm that.
Right?
If we were to roll over, Senator, we would actually have to go and discuss that also with the current carriers. Because the rates are already set for FI 23, for FI 23 clean year.
Okay. Let me just read to you what the governor's office wrote, okay? Senator Blas has also introduced a bill to roll over the current Guan health insurance contract for another year. This bill would violate the Constitution and expose the government of Guam to lawsuits as it would impair the obligations of previously negotiated contracts. The current contract does allow for a 90-day extension, but anything beyond 90 days requires a renegotiation. That's where we got the 90 days. So whether, it's either they're wrong or you're wrong. That's where we got it. Okay? That's, no, 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 no. I'm not talking about you, Madam Chair, I'm talking, okay? Because that's where we got it. That's, we're in good faith that's where we got it because this is what was the official press release on this. Just wanted to bring that up. Secondly. Mr. Cameron, you stated that it was the team's recommendation to move forward in the way we're doing this. And I remind you, in a letter that you sent, Mr. Byrne, or the negotiating team sent to the governor on July 28th, the governor on July 28th this year, under recommendation for medical, the team voted and therefore recommends that Select Care, Stable and Take Care be awarded non-exclusive contracts for administration of medical benefits, and that Select Care be awarded an exclusive contract for pharmacy benefits. So no, your team, that's what your team voted on, that's what you sent to the governor. Mr. Byrne, earlier you meant there was a question that was asked of you about ERISA compliance, and your response to that was that the government is not required to comply with ERISA?
No, government entities are not required to comply with ERISA with, and I, with one exception, and that is in the nondiscrimination aspect of the...
So there is some compliance, because you were almost stirring that, no, we're not, we don't have to be in compliance.
Well, it didn't impact what the Senator Perez was saying.
I think it did impact. That's, okay, so, I mean, if you wanted to put a caveat...
It did not imp...
I heard it differently. And I just ask, please, okay? Check just whether or not, okay? It should be. That's all I'm asking. I'm not going to make any issue of it, all right? Okay?
Was a request in there, Senator?
If this, the policy, if the program that you have, are proposing with self-insurance, whether it is in compliance and it needs to comply with ERISA?
That's a slightly different question, and I would repeat what I just said, is that government plans do not have to comply with ERISA with the exception of the nondiscrimination provisions.
Okay. I appreciate also that you meant, say, government plans. You have rules and regulations? Government runs on rules and regulations. Is there real rules and regulations for self-insurance? Have they been approved, I mean, have they been drafted and approved?
What rules and regulations have you in mind?
Are the rules and regulations how you run a program?
We're not running the program, Senator. We have a TPA who's running the program.
No, no, the TPA runs the parts of the program. You own the program. You are the insurer. You are the insurance company.
I will repeat, the TPA is responsible for running the program.
The TPA is responsible? So what are we doing this for? What are we doing this for? If the TPA is going to act like the insurance carrier itself, why are we doing, why are we doing this? What responsibility then does the government of Guam have as the insurer?
The government of Guam has the responsibility for the ultimate financial responsibility...
And what rules and regulations do you have in place for that?
I don't think, I don't think there needs to be any rules and regulations other than those that we already have.
You're going to have a trust fund, aren't you?
We're going to have a special fund.
What's the rules and regulations with regards to the transfer in and the transfer out of funding from there?
The same as the rules and regulations for any special fund.
So there is going to be rules and regulations. There is rules and regulations.
There are laws that govern the transfer in and out for special funds.
Okay. How much do you have in your medical trust fund right now?
We don't have a medical trust fund right now. We're still not in the medical period where we need one.
And how do you, first off, you know, you make mention earlier that there's other companies on Guam that have successful self-funded programs. Do you, are you, do you recognize or do you, are you agreements that a lot of these places that have self-funded programs had reserve accounts prior to the start? Did you know that?
I imagine they've built up reserves.
They, no, they started with a reserve program, with a reserve.
Okay. I happen to have a different experience.
What's that?
I happen to have had a different experience when I started.
Okay. So how did we intend to build our reserve if we have no reserve?
I think I already answered that.
No, I'm not, I'm not quite...
You may not have agreed with it, but what I said was, we will gather the premiums on day one, and the claims will be paid out after the claim review period, possibly 45 days. We hope to pay providers earlier. That's up to the TPA.
And what, in your discussions in putting together your program, what would your acceptable medical loss ratio be?
As I, also, I think I answered Senator Perez on that. We're not here to make a profit. We're not an insurance carrier that has to return money to stockholders. We just need to make sure that our claims plus our IBNR does not exceed our premiums over a period. And I think you heard Mr. Christostomo say, you can't just look at little periods, you have to look over a, I think he said a three-year period.
I, thank you. I'm going to put this very simply. With this equation, okay? Very simple equation. You get $100 in premiums. What do you anticipate or what do you feel is going to be your normal to separate what you're going to need for claims and what you're going to need for your administrative costs, as well as your TPA fee?
As I say, we don't need to make a profit, we just need to be able to pay the claims.
I'm not asking you about profit, I'm asking you about costs.
We just need to meet the costs.
Okay, so what is that? What would be your anticipated cost on $100?
I don't know, Senator. That's the whole point. We haven't, we haven't got to that period. This, like any other estimate, like the revenue estimate that you just voted on, is an estimate.
Okay, what's your fee to TPAs?
I beg your pardon?
What is the fee that you've negotiated with your TPAs?
We can give you that number. I'll ask Leo to give it to you.
Okay. What's the fee negotiated for your TPAs? That's P E P M?
P E P M.
So with a care, with an insurer who's going to be paying $2 and, what's she put there? $2.04 a pay period. So that's about $4.08. God knows what the, that's why we need to see what the government share would be, because then you got about 20, did she say 25 P E P M?
It's 2625.
26 P E P M. Okay. So if you were to break that down into $100, that's about 74% of your, of your premiums, then that would go towards, 74 cents or $74 of your premium that will go towards your claims then.
Could you, could you repeat that, please?
I'm just trying to find what your ratio is going to be between what you're going to put away for claims and what you're going to put away for your fees.
Yeah, but I think you might have missed that, for instance, for the RSP plan, we get no premiums, but then we have reduced claims.
Sure, I understand, so there's an average. There's an average.
There's an average.
But there's still, there's still a $26 P E P M, no matter what, right?
And that's probably no different from what it would be if we had an insured plan, and it's probably no different from what it would be if we rolled over.
Okay, if you want to talk about insurance plans, insurance plans basically have an 80/20 ratio. I'm asking you what your ratio is going to be.
We don't need to have a ratio. We just need to make enough money to pay the claims.
Yes, you do.
A ratio is needed, as I said before, if you need to make a profit. We don't need to make a profit.
It's not making the profit, it's paying off your debts. It's paying, it's paying what is owed to you. I'm not asking you about profit, I recognize that. You hope that whatever profit that you have will go towards your reserve. That's what your profit is going to be. I understand that. That's not my question. That wasn't my question. My question is of the $100, okay, for every $100 that you get, for every $1 that you get, how much of that is going to go, have you already planned to say that you're going to set aside for claims, and how much are you going to set aside for your fees?
Well, I guess you will be able to see that when we give you the government rates, because the monthly premium that will fund that P E P M is the sum of the government rates and the employee rates.
Well, then, yeah, then, there's going to be more questions then, Madam Chair, tomorrow, because, you know, I mean, that's a pretty significant question to be asked, because I, you know, we want to make sure that in the premiums that you're going to be able to collect, you're going to have enough for your claims, you're going to have enough to be able to pay whatever fees you're going to be, and then you're going to need, you're going to need to be able to set aside monies for your, you know, for your reserve. That's a simple question. I think in every household, basic budget household, that's what you'll find, okay?
Senator, but the same question applies to a rollover.
To a what?
Are you going to answer? I hope that maybe you can. The same question applies to a rollover, because we don't know what, we don't know what the premium cost would be on a rollover.
On a what? Sorry?
On a rollover.
On a rollover? Well, I just finished...
If your bill had some, you know, there's a contract, right? Your bill is somehow trying to interfere with the contract. If your bill had some cost containment in there, then I think that would be explicable, but it doesn't have any cost containment in there.
You have, well, you know what? Surprise, surprise, surprise. We got the information we've been looking for for the longest time today. Surprise, surprise, surprise. You were supposed to deliver, you were supposed to deliver this information so that the legislatures can deliberate on this since July 31st. You asked for an extension, you didn't give it until very recently. Surprise.
Is the information available for your plan, Senator?
My information is, my information was based on your lack of communication, Mr. Byrne. Do you want to go there? Really? Do you really want to go there?
Senator, please, with some decorum, please.
Decorum? Who started it? Thank you.
Senator...
Mr. Byrne, are your contracts signed?
Are you referring to the 2020...
I'm referring to the current one.
It's at the governor's office, ready for signature.
Okay. Is your contract signed for the current year?
It's at the governor, well, Select Care. No, no, for this, the current year is '23.
Yeah.
It's at the governor's office, awaiting signature.
It's where?
It's at the governor's office, awaiting signature.
What day is today, Madam Chair? Today is the...
August 31st, 2023.
August 31st, and the contract for this fiscal year, for this program period, is still at the governor's office for, really?
Yeah. It has for one provider, not the other.
It doesn't matter. How in the hell are we making payments without a contract?
Yes, that's always the case.
Oh, thank you for admitting it to us now. Madam Chair? Thank you very much. I think we better sleep on this. I moved that we recessed until 8:30 tomorrow morning. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Madam Chair, I move to amend the motion to recess until 10:00 tomorrow.
No. I was informed that the Department of Administration has a meeting that they can't get. I'd like to move, I'd like to keep the hearing until tomorrow at 8:30, because he has a 10. We will be in recess to 8:30 tomorrow morning.